While this meeting of the Abington Board of Selectmen to order, would you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our first announcement?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Selectmen regrets to announce the passing of Mel Libby, age 89, on December 20th. Mel was a decorated veteran of World War II, earning the Purple Heart and the Bronze Star. He was also very active in the community, serving several years as Park and Rec Commissioner and a primary organizer for the Abington Little League. Would you please join the board in a moment of silence for Mr. Mel Libby? Okay, thank you. Please be seated. Public announcements, we have a few of them. First, the HUG Foundation is holding a benefit game and after-party in which a portion of the proceeds will benefit the Nick Malefrante Fund and Mark Chirokus. The game will be the Boston Bruins Alumni versus Team Abington. The date is Saturday, January 14th. The place is Rockland Ice Rink located at 599 Summer Street in Rockland, and the puck drops at 3:00 P.M. Adult tickets are $10, and children under 12 are $5, available at the door. The after-party will be at 6:00 P.M. at the Knights of Columbus on Hancock Street in Abington. Come hang out with Bruins legends, listen to live music, and participate in the raffles and silent and live auctions. Dinner is included with admission, and the tickets are available at the door for $20. Come out and have fun and raise money for a great cause. Also, the HUG Foundation is sponsoring an ice skate exchange. You can swap a pair or just take a pair for a $10 donation. Please contact the ice skate exchange at stramwoods@aol.com for availability. That's stramwoods@aol.com for availability. You can also visit the HUG Foundation on Facebook. Also, the Abington Fire Chief would like to announce that the open burning will begin on January 15th, 2012 until May 1st, 2012. Open burning is allowed during the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for the purposes of disposing of small tree limbs and yard waste, provided the rules and regulations are safely followed. Building materials and leaves are not permitted. A permit for open burning must be obtained, which is free of charge, and can be found on the Abington Town website, abingtonma.gov, or at the Abington Fire Station. Online permits are encouraged for the residents' convenience. Does anybody else have any public announcements?
I don't see any.
Sure. Hold the mic up close.
Thank you. Residents of all ages are encouraged to attend this Thursday night's Abington High School Girls Basketball Game, which is being featured as their annual pack-to-place game. The Green Wave Girls are undefeated in the Social League and will be playing an undefeated Fairhaven High School team at 6:30 Thursday, January 12th. All residents are urged to wear green, and children under 12 are admitted free of charge. So that would be a good take. And another event I'd like to announce is the trivia night on January 28th. This event is held to raise funds for our tricentennial events, most importantly, the parade and the fireworks. It's team trivia, so it's typically a team of 10 players, so you really don't have to know much about trivia, because you can blame the people on the team if you lose. And we had this last year, just so you know, it was, you can bring food to the event, there is a bar that's open, I'm not going to say it's an open bar, there's a bar that's open, and you can also order food in, it's at the VFW, and we really, it was really, really well-received, and we had a great time, it was a lot of fun. And I will guarantee you that the likelihood of coming in last is probably pretty remote. If, in fact, the Abington Board of Selectmen put a team in, the chances are pretty good. So, again, that's January 28th. If you want to contact myself or anybody on the tricentennial committee, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else?
There's a Christmas tree drop-off, I believe, this Saturday, next Saturday, and the following Saturday, is that correct? Just these first two Saturdays up at the Groveland Street landfill. So if anybody has a live Christmas tree that they're looking to get rid of, the landfill is open from 9:00 to 12:00 this Saturday.
It's posted on the website as well.
And then the other thing is just to let people know that nomination papers are available now for town elections, so if anybody's interested in running for a town election spot, nomination papers are available.
Anything else? Okay. Let's see. First thing on the agenda, 6:45, vote to approve proposed amendment to Abington Cable Television License. We're going to have to put that off.
It wasn't advertised at the time, so I don't see why you can't move it.
We can do it anytime?
Yeah, the time was not advertised.
Okay. At 6:45, we have vote to approve proposed amendment to the Abington Cable Television License. We have a guest from Verizon Fios, Jill Reddish, to help explain the amendment to the license.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here today in my capacity as the Cable Advisory Committee. Just to quick, bring it up to date, in 2008, a license was issued to Verizon for cable service in town. In 2009, a renewal of the license for Comcast was issued to Comcast in town. There was a slight difference in one area, the calculation of revenues in the two licenses, and at the request of Verizon, we brought forward an amendment to their earlier document to bring it in line with the later document in 2009. I believe it was a number of months ago that we were here in front of you and presented the report to this committee, I think a couple of members may have changed since then, and it was voted to approve it. There was a process we had to go through where we had to post it, have a public comment period, put it out there. We can, I think we can tell you that there were no public comments that came in during that period, and that's not surprising because it's really a very small technical revision. So I believe you have in front of you the revision today, and Jill Reddish from Verizon is here to answer any questions you might have on it.
Any other questions?
Just, Henry, I just, this probably has nothing to do with this. I don't know how to get into this properly, but I recently attended two meetings, that one having to do with capping of the dump and one having to do with a bylaw revision in which the town's attorney was there, and it was an absolute wealth of information that was brought forth at those meetings. And my question probably is, we've talked about for a number of months and probably even going into years about having the town hall wired, and I couldn't help but going away from those meetings, and I take your point well, that maybe not the whole thing, but at least the first law. And we spoke to even the committees on that because it was, it was just an enormous amount of information, the presentation of the town attorneys made, and then the fact that the capping of the dump is going to affect every individual in the town of Abington, not just the people on Groveland Street. That it would have been nice if we had even a, you know, not necessarily somebody to run the camera, but I noticed in some of the other towns they have a fixed camera and they can go and record that. Is that something that is going to come, I mean, you know, is it town, the town we have the school situations that we're talking about and stuff like that? In my limited experience in public services, if you let the people know, the more information we get them, you know, the smaller the target gets on us, and I think you'll do that. But that, just a question, I don't want to put you on the squad.
You're right, it is a little off-topic for what we're talking about tonight, but I can tell you that if we know that Abington Cam knows about a particular meeting, we can provide field equipment. We don't have fixed equipment in the rooms, but we have portable equipment that can be set up in the room, and certainly if a meeting is scheduled for this room, the equipment is always here and available to them. And we have, I don't know that we were aware of either of those that...
No, no. In fairness to you, I don't...
...that could have provided the recording of them, and you're right, we can do that. We have purchased additional field equipment. The field equipment can be utilized in a meeting room, out at an event out in town or something like that, plus, as Justin had pointed out earlier, I think, the equipment in this room is often not utilized when meetings are held in this room, and we just aren't aware that, you know, that there's a meeting going on or the meeting chooses not to be recorded. So we can do that, and it is something we're working on. I can also tell you that, I believe it was today, there was a meeting scheduled with the new technology person, and Justin, I think it might have got moved till tomorrow due to schedule issues, but we're working on that piece too to bring us to the next level. So, following up on what we talked about maybe a month ago, we are moving toward that. But again, tonight, all we're doing is voting on this amendment on the Verizon contract, and it's a completely different topic. But we are working on it, but while we're on cable, let's put this, if any board or any committee has a meeting that they, you know, would like to see recorded, would like to have recorded, they can either be trained to do it themselves, we can provide the equipment, we can possibly provide somebody to assist them, we can, you know, certainly provide equipment for them to do that, and certainly any meeting in this room should, you know, the equipment is here at all times, we can record them. They wouldn't necessarily go out live, but they'd be recorded and played, and we can beat them up with it over and over and over again.
I think probably the issue is getting somebody to record it. That's probably, you know, if you're saying you might be able to provide somebody, I often thought of some...
Yeah, especially, you know, especially a thing like that, we could certainly make sure that somebody is there, whether it's a volunteer, which is certainly the way often these things occur.
Right.
As you know, all the finance committee, all the school committee meetings are done by volunteers. You know, it certainly can be, and possibly we can provide somebody, you know, from Abington Cam to do it, especially for an important event, but we need to know, we don't have ESP.
Well, you know what it is, I don't think they necessarily came off as being an important event until the meeting started and the exchange started to occur between the, you know what I mean? It was just some of the questions about, you know, the type of soil and the test pits and everything that the town's experienced up there was very valuable, and I just happened. I apologize for being off the thing on that. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Henry and Jill Reddish?
Basically, this is going to bring both contracts so they're the same.
Jill, did you want to speak on?
We discovered the inequity at the, on the day that you, the board was scheduled to sign the Comcast agreement, and with the help of Henry and Dory and John especially as of lately, we've been able to move this amendment along. It's really just a question of equity and competitive neutrality. What it does is it brings the two gross annual revenue definitions in the Comcast agreement and the Verizon agreement into sync so that we're calculating it in the same way with the same revenues, and that's basically all this amendment does.
And the statute requires communities to make sure that if you have multiple providers, that they're on an equity playing field, that they all have the same advantages or disadvantages on a license-by-license basis. So this is more technical in nature, and all it's going to do for us is make sure that Verizon and Comcast are on the same level playing field.
As far as calculating their revenues that come to the...
That's correct. Right. So you're comparing apples to apples at the end of, you know, the year, and it's, you know, the state would like it that way as well.
Do these licenses have an end date or are they indefinite?
No, they have an end date.
Will this adjust the end date, this amendment?
No, not at all. Not at all.
It's just about the fees and how they're collecting and calculating.
Anything else? Anyone care to make a motion?
Motion.
A motion to accept the amendment?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we get you to sign it so that Jill can take the copy of it?
I think I did. Oh, was it on the table out there?
Yeah, there is one on the table, but you can sign that one for us. We're, Jill will have to sign that.
Actually, we have to.
We're asking you to sign two originals, and then Verizon will execute the copies and return one back to the town.
Is anyone here tonight from the Griffin's Dairy Committee?
The what committee?
Griffin's Dairy.
No, they'll be here at 7:00, I could speak with them today. I can talk a little bit about budget.
Yes?
Oh, here's one, we have to wait for the youngest member.
Okay. All right. We're going to move on. We're going to jump down to number one on the action discussion items. We're going to, approval of minutes, December 12th, 2011, open session and executive sessions. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes of the December 12th open session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. We have a motion to, for the executive session, not to be released until all matters have been settled.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, one abstain. Kevin Donovan abstains. All right. Is everyone here, Peter, you guys? Were you waiting for Felicia or anybody? Okay. You can, we can go right now if you want. Tip, Ellen, we have next on our agenda, a vote to create an MSBA feasibility building committee and appointment of a board of selectman member to the committee.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, members of the board, thank you. Your school superintendent, Peter Schaefer, and I'm here tonight to hopefully gain acceptance and approval for the creation of this committee, which is required by state statute, as the first step in the feasibility and then hopefully ultimately the construction of a school. You can't construct a school working with MSBA without doing a feasibility study, which we've talked about at other meetings, and I know there'll be other discussions about, and you, in order to have the feasibility study according to the regulations go the way that it needs to go, the town needs to have this building committee, which is, has broad representation from the different towns and, from the different town committees and groups on this committee. And so what I've provided is a sample letter from MSBA, which describes the regulation, and then the designation, name, title of the people from the town that are the minimum to participate in order to hopefully one day partner with them for reimbursement, hopefully similar to the reimbursement that we're getting on the Woodsdale Windows, which is close to 60 percent, which, by the way, that project is near completion and going very well. But particular to this process, outlined here are what's required in terms of participation. SBC member who is MCPPO certified, that's somebody who's licensed in public procurement, local chief executive officer, town administrator or manager, a school committee member, superintendent of schools, local official responsible for building maintenance, representative of office authorized to, by law, to construct school buildings, school principal, member knowledgeable in educational mission and function of facility, local budget official or member of the local finance committee, members of the community with architectural, engineering, and construction experience, and then other, please provide other backgrounds. So you can have, you can have people, you can have two members of a board, finance committee, board of selectmen, these are the minimum requirements. So tonight, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have and ask for your approval of that and then appoint it to that committee. And I also brought, just as an informational piece, this is the feasibility study that Rockland conducted for their, the middle, the middle school, senior high school that they're currently constructing, and I thought it would be something that somebody would maybe want to take a look at at some point. I can leave this with the board.
Yeah.
So you can peruse it, it's your pleasure.
Leave it in, we'll take a look at it. Thank you, Peter. Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent?
The people on this committee, other than the selectman member, how do those folks get appointed? Are they appointed by us or are they appointed by the school committee or?
I've asked the school committee for approval of the formation of this, they've approved it. I've drafted a letter just requesting openly members of the community who might want to participate. Then my plan was to take that collection of names and review it with the chair of the school committee for membership. I'm open to other suggestions on that. We're not bound, I'm aware of, to any particular appointment process, I just want to make sure that it's broadly advertised and inclusive and we fulfill the minimum requirements of participation.
If I could, Peter, in regards to the committee itself, I think the authorization to create the committee would be paramount. Is that, does the school committee itself retain that jurisdiction under the school building assistance regulations? Or, I think for the purposes of the town clerk swearing in people, if that is silent, then what I was going to do unless, well, my first question would be, does the school committee retain jurisdiction to establish the committee, to your knowledge?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. I think then, if I would, in order just to keep everything so that make the town clerk's life easier, I was going to make a motion that we establish the committee itself on a defined number, and then the, and I will go forth and name the positions, that would be appointed by the school committee, the finance committee, and then the remaining by the selectmen, so that there's no ambiguity and nobody, you know, gets... So I guess the first question, the second question then would be, based on the composition of the recommended, I see 10 positions here, you know, obviously I think you probably want a, an odd number, what would your recommendation be in terms of the constitution of the committee itself?
I'd be interested in being inclusive of anybody who, you know, just about almost anybody that wanted to be involved. I'd almost rather deal with a group that was too large than run the risk of not including somebody that wanted to participate.
Okay, well, then I think maybe what we should do then is, rather than constitute the committee itself, maybe throw a feelers to get who's interested, because I think if we assign a number to it, you know, then we're bound by that, and I just, I'm afraid if we don't take some sort of framework in constituting the committee itself, it's not going to have a legal focus, if you will, for people to get sworn in, so...
Could I make a recommendation?
My understanding was it has to be at least these 11 positions, correct?
Correct.
At least these 11, which, and each person has to be a person for that particular position.
Yes, that's correct.
So what about creating the committee with at least these 11?
Sure.
And then if others...
You could add to it if you like.
Yeah, we can add to it.
Just remember when the town clerk does her paperwork and certifies and swears in people, if, as long as we do it in that vein, we can't just leave it open-ended, they would have to come back before us. If, say, 15 people wanted to come in, we would just amend it to include an additional, the membership would be increased by whatever it is for members or what have you. So that being the case, I would make a motion, we create a school building committee consisting of a certified public purchasing official, a local chief executive officer, which will be defined as the chairman of the board of selectmen, a town manager, a school committee member to be appointed by and from it, a superintendent of schools, a local official responsible for building maintenance, a school principal to be appointed by either the school committee or the school superintendent, solely within their jurisdiction, a member knowledgeable in educational mission and function of facility, again, be appointed by the school committee and/or the superintendent, a local budget official, a member of the local finance committee, I would say the member of the finance committee to be appointed by and from it, and a member of the community, two members of the community with architectural, engineering, and/or construction experience, and I think that would round it out to 11 if my math is correct.
I apologize. Trish McDonald reminded me that we have two school committee members who were interested, so we've got two of those in the school committee on this group.
All right, then two school committee members and one member of the community, so that it rounded out to 11 people.
Would that be 12? If it was two school committee members?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, I have.
12.
12. Well, it says right here, members...
There were 11, right? This is the... The box at the top of this, on the second side of the page is a continuance from the first side.
Administrator and manager, all right.
Eight, nine, 10, 11, and then, no, 10, and then two members.
Okay, well, then, all right, then add...
If you want to add another selectman.
Add two selectmen.
Okay.
The chairman and the vice chairman.
Okay. So that's your motion.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
You got a second?
Okay. Any further discussion?
Is it going to be an infinite number of people? I mean, or do we have a fine, should we make it a max?
Well, that wasn't part of his motion.
No.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just concerned that, okay, we have 11 people and then another 15 get added and you get an unwieldy committee, and then those 11 people's votes don't even really matter anymore.
No, but let's see who steps forward to volunteer. It's going to be hard enough.
Well, I agree, we should at least put a max in there, that's my thoughts. Make it 15, something like, at least that way it won't be an unwieldy committee.
But I think the superintendent's point was he'd rather have, if people want to volunteer and be part of the process, then you'd prefer to have it that way.
Well, you could make it so that the non-voting members, because they're input, because it's clearly a category in the right that says voting members, you can make it so those 11 or 12 or whatever, or whatever the number we came up with were voting members, and then the other ones could be alternates or not voting members.
We could set, perhaps, if I could, I apologize, we could set some sort of ceiling that allows for some additional participation. If we needed to add more non-voting members, we could. Do understand, you know, we wouldn't want to get 50 people on a committee. I've worked with a committee around site selection that was as large as 19, and that was very productive. That's a large group, but it was very productive. So 19 adds, gives me some room, but it could be less than 19.
Do you like that number, Kenny, 19?
19? Sure.
Okay. Would you care to amend your motion?
I would be happy.
Okay.
Just a question. How are we going to advertise this and do we have a cutoff date?
I've got a draft of a letter that I was working on at the end of last week where I believe I picked the end of the month as the date, and we're going to advertise it clearly, you know, we're talking about it tonight, we'll put it on the website. I just, I hate spending a lot of money publishing in a newspaper.
No, 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 I think the website's fine, it's just as long as, as long as we're out in front of the public and let them know that it is open, it is available.
You can also do emails through the school.
Correct, yeah, that's fine. I don't mean the newspaper at all.
Do you want me to put it on your town, sir?
Sure. I'd welcome that, appreciate it, yeah.
Okay. But you can't afford to appoint, like, the town manager to the committee, or is that something that's self-evident?
That's someone that's going to be required by SBA.
Yeah, you're already on.
Yeah, you're already on.
You, the chairman and vice chairman, are already on.
Okay. We have a motion. Second?
I second.
Oh, you second it? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, great.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thanks, and that's it, so it's, we're all, Chair, Vice Chairman. All right, move along. The cracker, is everyone here from Griffin's Dairy?
Well, three of us.
Is that enough?
I don't think Kieran's going to be able to make it, and I don't know about it, because if you call the house and they, and they, it's only like you want to call them back for it.
Are you ready to go? What do you want? Okay. Next on the, next on the agenda, we have an update from the Griffin's Dairy Committee.
This is another one, too.
That's an older one.
Mine is more succinct, if you want to put the other cracker.
Succinct? Thank you.
Yeah, less words.
Okay.
Right.
You're right.
Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Richard Donovan, chairman of the Griffin's Dairy Committee, and we have an updated report for you tonight. The committee has ordered to recommend to the board of selectmen three options. A is for farming and agricultural use of the property, expanded field space for the Park and Recreation Commission, and explore the possibilities for solar field on a portion of the property. The town manager will complete a wetland delineation of the entire property. That is, the status is pending on that until probably spring. The goal of the committee will begin with mowing the, the operations on the dairy from completion, upon the completion and approval of the wetland delineation. The primary goal of the committee is to engage in the agricultural reuse of the farm. Town manager recently heard from Mr. Honstra, and he remains interested in some kind of agricultural reuse of the land. If you recall, you met with Mr. Honstra, I believe, back several months ago, and he was very interested in the land then, and he's, spoke to John the other day, and he's still very much interested in it. And that's what the committee was, that was our number one recommendation.
Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Donovan? Kenny?
Are there plans to do the garden again, as they did last year?
If there's, pardon me, if there's, nothing has been done as far as leasing the land to Mr. Honstra, we'll go ahead with the garden. I believe he had said, when we talked to him, do you recall, he had reached, said he'd go along with the garden anyway, did he?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I think he'll go along with the use of the garden anyway.
And that was a success, I believe, wasn't it?
Oh, I think very much so. Very, very, many people spoke highly of it and were very happy with it.
Would we look into expanding that, or was it, was it filled up last?
I'm sorry, you what?
Was it filled up last year, or would, should it be expanded possibly, or?
There's, there's probably still room to expand.
It was full.
It was full?
Mm-hmm. Do you have a question, Chris?
No, I was going to say, the, the proposed practice fields, the two practice fields and the solar fields, do we, do we have a section of that parcel in mind where there would be, and would it, would it interfere or hamstring us, or hamstring Mr. Honstra if he decided to go through with his, his farm proposal?
I don't, I don't think that, I think that if we were to look forward to an agricultural reuse, which I think is the committee's, you know, primary focus, that, you know, the ball fields, the community garden, which I think is agricultural in nature and could probably be expanded, would be secondary to the creation for his use or what the agricultural use would be. So we don't have a specific area designated, and we probably wouldn't look at doing any designated area until we have a definitive lease contract with, with Honstra as to how much he wants to use. Maybe he wants to use 10 acres, maybe he wants to use 30 acres. I know it's a 64 acre parcel. Of that, only about 30 acres are usable. So, you know, he may want to use it all, at which point, you know, we may have to rethink if we, you know, want to do solar there or look at doing solar at the landfill or on school building. So, you know, we have a number of different options in relationship to solar and how that would benefit the town. But as far as my understanding of what the Griffin's Dairy Committee has proposed, the primary choice is agricultural reuse. There was also discussion of pathways or hiking trails or walking trails to possibly a connection to the bike trail that was being discussed with the old colony railway.
Town council.
So, you know, there are still a number of fluid options, but I don't think that we want to be in a, a town, that we want to be in a position as a town is concerned with saying to Honstra, we want this area for solar, this area for fields. You tell us what you need, and then we would look at, because our primary focus, I think, is still reuse agricultural. I'd love to get to the point where we may get a, an ice cream vendor there, we may get, you know, we may sell produce, we may do a number of different things, may have cows in a barn and do some milking operations. And all of that is really going to depend upon who we lease up the property to. Because it's publicly owned, we have to go through the 30B process in leasing that land for its highest and best use, whether it's for a dollar value to the town, or maybe somebody may came up, come up with something that is more valuable to the town that we haven't thought of.
When is the wetlands delineation going to be performed?
Probably in the spring.
In the spring. That would be the first step.
Kevin? Yeah.
Yeah. Kevin?
If I could, and I agree with John and Mr. Donovan in terms of the agricultural reuse, and only, I guess I've had experience of this when I was chairman of the county commissioners, we actually took and developed a farm property at the county hospital in Hanson, and it was a big hit with the neighborhood. We brought cows and we had chickens and developed garden and what have you. And I think, given that the use of the property, that personally, that's something that I'd like to see, you know, reintroduced at that location. And until we get an idea on one, what the wetlands delineation is and B, what we could do with the property itself, I think that should be our primary focus, but just my personal comments.
Kenny?
When's the last time you had communications with Mr. Honstra, John?
Last week.
Oh, just, so it is recent.
It's been very, it's been ongoing and it's been very recent.
And he is still interested?
Oh, absolutely. He was, and I'll just share a portion of our conversation, he was very happy with the town's movement and decision to, you know, tear down the buildings that were really dilapidated. And so he looks at that and says, well, the town is interested in some sort of development going forward. And when he uses the word development, it's farm development, it's agricultural development. And I think that, you know, from his perspective, he's very much interested in doing that.
Any other questions?
What are the, what are the plans of your committee? Do you, your intentions, in other words, is there, in the future, are you going to come to us with your final recommendations? Is that the plan, or is it just going to be like a, the committee's going to keep going and, you know, if someone else has an idea, they'll come to you, or do you have like a, an end date, or, I mean?
As far, as far as the committee is concerned, or it's my belief, that we will go ahead and go through with the delineation of the, of the farm, and if the property is leased out for, to Mr. Honstra for a period of time, whether it be five years, 10 years, or 20 years, we will step back at that time. If somebody comes back with, with something else as far as an additional use, we will, would speak to him. But if we lease the property to him, he's got this property under lease and that's it.
I just have one, maybe a comment, and I spoke to John during the week about this. I don't know if anybody got the email about the dogs up at Island Grove, and, you know, that was something that we looked at briefly when we do the first original Griffin's Dairy Committee about maybe a, a dog park in an area where the dogs could run free, get fenced in. It's possible, there's a lot of property up there that might be good for that. So I don't know if that's something you could look into, or maybe you've already looked at, or if you, you know?
We haven't looked at it, Kenny, but if, if Mr. Honstra only, as John mentioned earlier, if he only wanted 10 acres, that we could fence that off and leave, and then fence off an area for the dogs to win. But if he's got the whole farm, they're just, you can't have dogs running around with cows up there, or I don't believe you can.
Kevin, can you?
Not once you won't be chasing them down the story.
You'd be shepherd farming the farm situation.
Anything else? No? Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. All right, next on the agenda, review of budget control reports. John, could you start the discussion on that?
I think they were emailed to you, you know, we don't have.
They were emailed.
And they have hard copies, you have hard copies as well? This is a budget control report at the executive level that gives you a snapshot of where we are as far as expenditures are concerned, to what we have budgeted. I have asked for department heads to provide explanations as to whether or not they're going to meet those expenditures for the FY 12 fiscal year, which ends on June 30th, if there's a need for us to look at a reserve fund transfer, if they can't satisfy the deficiency, if there is one that exists within, you know, the various departments. We should be at about, you know, 50% of our expenditure year-to-date numbers, and in many cases, we're, you know, under that, we're at 47, and in some cases, depending upon the budget itself, we are close to or will exceed those budget amounts. And for example, one that pops out in my review is the legal budget. And, you know, we have a number of issues that have, are yet to be decided, and we have a number of, and when I say issues, I'm talking about legal issues. We have appropriated $54,000, you know, to that line item, and we have, in my discussions with Joe Fair, have reached our $24,000 threshold in what is considered a budgetary amount that we have to reach before other items kick in where there is no, you know, additional cost to the town. So we're going to keep a very close eye on the, on the legal budget. I'll report back to you from time to time as to where we stand, and if we do have the, if we are going to go over budget, I'll discuss those options with the finance committee as well, and the board of selectmen, and determine an appropriate response as to whether or not we intend to transfer money from another line item, especially within the annual, to satisfy our projected expenditure for the fiscal year, and also to identify, you know, those areas and reasons as to why we went over budget. You know, we use town council, I think, more so than we have in the past, and I think that, from my perspective, it is always a wider choice to use council, but to use council in a way that will provide us with a, a return on our investment. For example, we have a new, our invitation for bid going out for waste collection at Curbside. We've had council involved in that process. They have reviewed a number of additions or re additions to the invitation for bid. We've also used council for a number of employment-related matters. We have special council and other, and council involved in updates for the board, which are free of charge. But we then have a number of cases that are, have not been settled, that, you know, need to be settled, and we're looking at ways in which we can settle those cases to reduce our legal costs. But council is inexpensive to some degree, but it's a necessary expense, in my opinion, to avoid long-term related costs down the road. If we don't, if we haven't dotted our eyes across our keys.
Thanks, John.
I don't know if anyone has any question about a, a specific line item. I can try to address that.
Any other questions?
Or get a response for you.
If everyone's all set, I'd like to move on.
Could I just ask a question?
Sure.
Somewhat in conjunction with this. How, how are we doing on the receipts side as far as meeting our goals and objectives as far as receipts?
Our revenue is coming in as we had anticipated. I, we are going to take and probably have a report for you in a week or two that'll give you a, a six-month or close to a seven-month snapshot on revenues to projections, so that you can get both. We haven't done it here, and I'm not quite sure if the program that we have with the current vendor will give us that ability to do revenue, to revenue projection to actual revenue receipts. We have our major, our, our two tax bills to date are estimates, our third and fourth will be final. We have a big commitment going out in February, and so we're not going to, we're not going to know until March as to how our revenue projections are coming in to what is actual. So we'll be working on a report for that purpose as well, probably in our, our February meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If nobody else has anything, we can move on to the town manager report.
The, it falls in nicely with what we're, what we're doing. We project to have, at the end of Tuesday evening, the budget reports, the FY 13 estimated budget report for the town, which includes, which will include the 2.4 million increase in the school budget, in our, our operating budget. So you'll see that based on where we stand for FY 13 versus where we, where we were for FY 12, there will be substantial increases in, in education and in, in some of the operating budgets of the town. I have asked the, in creation of the town side of the budget, I have asked department heads to provide me with what they need from an expenditure perspective as it relates to the FY 13 budget. I'm very interested in what they need to operate relative to their departments as far as expenditures are concerned. We have not discussed an increase in personnel in, with my department heads. I have a budget, a department head meeting with them tomorrow at 1:00. We're going to go over where we are with the budget format and getting that budget reported out so that we can begin to look at the revenue side, project what our revenues are going to be for FY 13, and move forward. So I have two issues. One is, I have to provide you in February with where we stand with our FY 12 budget on revenue projections to actuality, and then I have to provide you and the finance committee with our revenue estimates for FY 13. So budgeting in the public sector is looking into a crystal ball and deciding just how clear or foggy the forecast will be. I am scheduled at the end of July to go to the Mass Municipal Association meeting. I believe that at that point in time, we'll have some preliminary estimate as to what the governor is going to recommend for an FY 13 budget. It is my understanding that revenues are up at the state level, employment is, unemployment is down, both on the national average and at the local level. I don't know if that's any indication of a recovery of any kind, which we've been waiting for, for about four years now, but it does mean that there will be additional revenue at the state level. Now, what they do with that revenue is something that we're hopefully going to find out when the governor addresses the, the trade show on the 20th or the 21st, and at that time, our next meeting or the meeting thereafter, I will have a better understanding of what the state is going to do, how they're going to treat local aid, whether or not we can anticipate an increase in local aid, if we do, what that amount will be, and how we're going to project our budget moving forward, you know, based on those preliminary numbers. As you know, in the past, we could always rely on the governor's budget to be the more conservative budget estimate. With this governor, it has been the more hopeful budget, the more liberal projection, and then the House and Senate have come in with lower estimates. I would anticipate with the passage of casinos and casino revenues that anticipated or projected, I've read early versions of the casino bill that have indicated that 200 million of the casino revenue will be going directly into the rainy day stabilization account at the casino revenue will be going directly into the rainy day stabilization account at the state level. We have been doing the same thing at the local level. When I started here, we had a negative free cash certification of $720,000. We wiped that out. We, at our last town meeting, our last fall town meeting, we had free cash of $1 million. We have, and at that same time, when I arrived, we had $1,000 in stabilization. We have $660,000 today, and we're looking to increase that stabilization number. As you know, the stabilization number that we, when we had, when we went out for authorization to borrow, our, our credit rating was impacted by that. It went from a double A positive to a double A negative, negative with a negative outlook. We have since then developed a strategy to put money back into stabilization. We do believe that when we go out for another authorization and we're, and we are rated, I, I'm hoping, I can't guarantee you, but I am hoping that Moody's or Standard and Poor's will look at that and begin to say to us, say to the town, you are heading in the right direction as it relates to having an amount of money available for, you know, dips and curves in, in the forecasts of, of the economy, that we're headed in the correct direction. And they may either maintain our negative outlook or maybe, may begin to improve on our negative outlook. All of this, in many respects, it has preceded me. However, I do take very seriously our ability to continue to save money and not to overextend ourselves, whether it is in our operating budget or for the schools or for the, the town. I meet on a regular, consistent basis with the finance team and the school committee on a weekly basis to go over our projections, where we stand, what our issues are. I can tell you that in FY13, as we approach the FY13 budget, there'll be $650,000 coming off our, our taxes in the sense that we have, we have authorizations that were outside of 2.5 that will be coming off. That'll mean a reduction in taxes to, to the residents of approximately $650,000. That debt was excluded. However, we now have the school department looking to put on additional debt, potentially in a feasibility study. Although that feasibility study is expected to come in at approximately $800,000, we are expecting reimbursement of approximately 56, 54 to 56%. So we have roughly $400,000 potential commitment. That is going to be something that will reach the voters for their consideration, potentially at the annual town meeting at either, I, I think our next meeting, I'm going to ask the board to consider a debt exclusion amount of 700, $800,000 for a feasibility study that we would then put on the ballot for override or debt exclusion consideration. If that happens, you're going to have a net impact in the sense that we have X number of dollars coming off. At the same time, we have consideration for putting on additional debt based on the feasibility study. I have spoken to the board, and there was a question asked at the last meeting as to whether or not we were interested in incurring additional debt for infrastructure, roads, sidewalks in the town. I can tell you from my experience in town that the road, the road system is not going to improve magically. It's going to require an investment of resources, and that money unfortunately cannot come from within the operating budget without sustaining reductions in services. So the question that I ask the board to consider at some point is to whether or not we want to invest in our infrastructure. If so, by what amount? My recommendation would be $5 million to be spread out over five years at a million a year to be spent on road and sidewalk construction, expansion, rebuilding of our, our existing roads and our, and some of our existing sidewalks as well. So there are a number of infrastructure needs, whether it's a school, a new school, or roads and sidewalks. But I do believe that we need to begin to plan for that and consider that as part of a debt exclusion that we will then look to establish at some point in the future. Now, if the school decides to spend, you know, and do a feasibility study, I would not recommend that we do the feasibility study, the building of a new school potentially, and that cost, and a infrastructure project all at the same time. I don't believe that that's fiscally sound, and I don't believe that it's fiscally responsible. However, I do believe that these are items that need to be addressed, and we're going to have to figure out when we're going to be able to do that. But those are some of the issues that are coming up, whether it's in the FY13 budget or the FY14, '15 budget, or as we begin to look out as to what we're going to do with respect to, to infrastructure. And I think that those issues need to be. We receive approximately $390,000 in Chapter 90 money from the state. And Ken and Cornell and I will vehemently tell you that that money is nowhere near what we need to maintain our roads and our sidewalks. Most of our Chapter 90 money is spent on road reconstruction projects. We completed a portion of, I think, was it Lincoln? Not Lincoln Street, but what's off of Lincoln that we finished last year? I can't think of the name of the road, the street. But we just resurfaced, you know, some roadway using Chapter 90 money in that section of town.
Hancock.
Hancock, yeah, Hancock Street. And then, of course, there, there was a problem with some of the drainage there, and we had to cut into the road and redo that. That was unexpected, but, you know. I would also consider asking that the board allow for moratoriums on cutting into roads that are newly refurbished in the town to extend its, its life reuse to a point where, you know, we can't cut in the road for the first five years without doing it with laser and, and being able to ensure that the structural integrity of the road will remain in place.
We do or do not have moratoriums right now.
Excuse me?
We do or do not have moratoriums. Is there a five-year moratorium after the street's been done?
I'm not quite sure if there is. If, if there is one, I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of it. I, I think that we should do that as a matter of policy.
Should.
But of course, there's going to be the issue. And that requires coordination. It requires us and the highway department to coordinate with the utilities and make sure that if they're going to upgrade a gas main or they're going to do any work, whether it be, you know, sewer, that we coordinate that so it's done prior to the resurfacing of the road so they don't have to revisit that later on. Those are issues that require us to coordinate the staff, and we'll, we'll certainly do that. But I'm not aware of a moratorium on roads, a new road cutting, where they're cutting into a new road with a moratorium of five years or more.
Does, does the highway superintendent have a capital plan pertaining just to roads and sidewalks? Does he have a schedule? I mean, he must know what needs, what roads in town need the most attention.
The, I think the highway superintendent can come in here and provide us with a very good report as to what roads he would consider that need to be resurfaced or refurbished. Some that need to be resurfaced, some that need to be totally reclaimed. We can put together a dollar value of what those costs would be over the next five years, and that will drive what that number is. There are some communities that I have worked in that have pavement management programs that look at each road objectively, decide the useful life of those roads, and categorizes them based on road conditions A, B, C, D, E, or C or D being the most in need of repair, and A being the roads that are in least need of repair. We started down that path, but I don't ever think that we completed that type of computer program, nor have we updated it. So those are things that I think we're going to need to do. If we're going to spend $5 million on roads, that's something that I think the townspeople would require us to do so that we're not spending our, our money in a way that is not going to get us to biggest bang for everyone.
Does anybody else have anything?
No, just, I, I agree with you. I think if, if this capital plan as far as road improvement is going to be done, it needs to be done in a coordinated effort, and it needs to be set out by Mr. Cornell developing where he thinks we need to prioritize and that sort of thing. And maybe the figure's not 5 million, maybe it's more, maybe it's less, but you can't really come out with a figure until you know where to go.
My venture, my guess, my educated guess would be that it's from more than 5 million.
It probably is, but there should, there should be a list and a priority list as what needs to be done and.
And the longer we wait, the more costly it's going to be.
And there, and there should be some communication with Keyspan and, you know, Abington Joint Water Works and, you know, so they're not, like you said, cutting up new roads. And if they have any work to do, make sure they do it before we do them over.
And, and if we don't have a moratorium, I think we need to develop one because that'll encourage the need for coordination.
Yeah. But the moratoriums don't stop utilities from digging them up when they need to. They stop residents from tying on, typically from sewer or some, for something like that.
If, if there is an emergency, that's one issue. But if we're coordinating with utilities before the final pavement, and I know that we have a binder coat that goes down that will require a year before we put the final coat on, within that period of time, we coordinate, obviously beforehand, but during that period of time, the other utilities go in and make their upgrades or put their secondary lines in or whatever they need before the final coat goes down. And all of that needs to be coordinated, and that, that'll require an effort on our part and also the utilities.
Does anybody else have any questions? If, if nobody has any questions, I'd like, I'd like to move on to, you all set, Sean?
I, I am at this point, unless you have a question on any of the follow-up stuff.
I, I can.
I can talk forever.
Just telling the town manager to report, I know you can.
No, no, I, I didn't.
You have a word.
I didn't. I think if I'm giving the town manager's report tonight and it's succinct, it's expect the budget Tuesday evening for finance committee and for board of selectmen. Monday's a holiday. The charter requires the budget to be submitted on the 15th. That's a Sunday. Monday's a holiday. We'll have it to you Tuesday. And, and the capital plans that we're talking about, the increases and drivers in the budget are, as I see them right now, very rough. School, pension, healthcare cost, if we do plan design, is going to go down.
Just to interrupt you, that's what I was going to ask you. Where do we stand now on the plan design as far as where we were last meeting and what progress has been made on that?
We, we've accepted the provisions that will allow us to move forward with plan design. We are, we have a meeting and a vote scheduled for next Thursday, this Thursday, I'm sorry, this Thursday for Mayflower on the actual rates. Once those rates are set, we can then dictate what our savings are going to be. We're going to be working on meeting with the unions in that regard as, as, as we move forward. We have to initially meet with the insurance advisory committee, which I think is loosely construed in this town. And then we have to meet with the PEC group, which would be the group, the Public Employee Committee, that is going to discuss how they're going to utilize the 25% savings based on what we're projecting our savings to be with the new plan design.
Whatever savings we do realize, are they going to be projected into next year's budget?
Well, the, yes, they will be part of the FY13 budget.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything under selectmen or old business? Kenny?
I know the warrant's going to be open soon.
I'm sorry, yes, the warrant will open February 1st and close, I believe, on the 24th or the?
29th.
29th?
Yeah, it's actually, it's open.
How many?
Yes, we'll take, we'll take.
Sorry, open, yeah.
Yeah, we'll take.
I'd like to see the selectmen sponsor an article where we purchase signs for town meeting that we can put around town, you know, reusable signs every year, plastic signs maybe with an insert that says town meeting Monday, some, some heavy-duty ones that we can put around and have the highway department put out, you know, purchase, so purchase them. Because right now, it's kind of, they put a little green sign up on the telephone pole, and if it doesn't stand out, we'd like to get something better, you know, more around town. If that's agreeable to the selectmen, or maybe we can co-sponsor with the finance committee the article.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
They have the A-frame style too.
Exactly.
I think all of them, what they have.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
We can look at putting that money in the, in the highway budget and have them make those signs up that can be changed for, you know, the date, the time, and location. Because if there's a warrant article, you change the location.
Or you could just make them so it has a, a permanent insert that says town meeting Monday, and they could put them up.
Yeah, which Monday is that?
It's next Monday.
No, no.
I saw holiday money, sorry.
There's a lot of towns around that have very impressive signs that indicate when the elections are, when the town meetings are, and they, and they simply slid numbers and they slide it in, and they're very.
Yeah.
They're very impressive and very informative to the residents. And I, I think there's a few spots in town where we should do that, yes.
And I, and I agree with that, and I think that if we do that, that we should do it right. The signs should be large enough for people to read and not have to fall over them. And they should be interchangeable so that we can put exactly the date, time, and location that can be changed for the fall town meeting, for the annual town meeting, and for any follow-up continuation.
Even, even rabies clinics, anything like that.
Yeah, anything else? If there was another bad hurricane like we had last summer, we could get, get the message out.
It should not be as long as the town manager's report.
No, yeah. It'll be too, you won't be able to read it without getting an answer.
If we could, and just in concert with the articles for town meeting, I'm quite sure we spent pains and labors to go over that personal bylaw. If we could resubmit that and just in the interest of making sure, I know the complaint was that we didn't share it with the elected officials, and that was probably pat and parcel, my fault that we didn't follow through with that. So if we could kindly share that with the elected officials so that we can hopefully get everybody on board prior to going to town meeting.
Okay. We can get that article. There were some changes that we will make to the article that we missed.
Right, yeah.
Just to clean up language, it was Tom, you know, executive secretary versus town manager. We'd clean that up in the rest of the article, and then we would email it to the boards.
And I would give them a finite time to respond back, just so we can say we've done it.
We also, but we also held a public meeting.
Oh, I know.
No one, absolutely no one. It was advertised, it was only the newspaper.
That's all right, we'll do it again and.
I know. I'll just.
When, when's the warrant closing again?
The 29th of Fe- of February.
Yeah, if we could have your comments back so we can make it nice and pretty.
Anything else under selectmen or old business? John, your, your performance evaluation, they're still trickling in. I'll have them summarized and ready for our next meeting.
Did, did the selectmen that submitted the first one get a prize or anything like that?
The selectmen who submitted the first one? I appreciate that. It was so, it was.
Thanks, Karen.
Nice job.
Thank you, all right.
You too, Andy. Okay. If there's nothing else, I'd like to move on to public comment. Just state your name and address, please, Tom.
Thanks, Chris. Tom Deon, 27 Mulberry Drive. And I just wanted to follow up on, I believe it was your meeting from December 12th, which I think involved a recommendation from the town manager to basically approve deficit spending in the snow and ice emergency account. And as I understood it, part of that, I think the town meeting puts up $100,000 to fund that, and I think we all realize that probably is going to get us to where we need to be. And I believe, I could have the numbers incorrect, but I think $32,000, because last year was a very heavy year, was used for salt to replenish our shed. And I think the number was around $65,000 for a new sidewalk plow or machine. And I'm certainly not in any position to comment on whether it was needed or not needed, but there's just a couple of problems that I, I see with that. but there's just a couple of problems that I see with that, because in my mind, that's a capital purchase, and I just know, being a resident of the town for many years, and going through a period where we didn't have the organization of a capital planning committee, and going through the prioritization, I'm pretty sure a month or six or two months before, that item was on the capital planning warrant, and I think the town meeting elected to pass over it. So I see that as an issue, and I also see that, as you know, with deficit spending, I think by law, you know, the board of assessors is required to certify whatever deficit you spend in that snow and ice, and put it on next year's tax rate, without any sort of scrutiny or review by, you know, the town meeting. So I guess the question I have, and I know there was some debate, I think Mr. Coyle, you know, questioned the town manager, and I think, just knowing this board, I think you'd have questions doing that. So my question, I think, is a simple one, is going forward, is this going to be standard operating procedure, that we're going to see CapEx put on accounts like this?
No, not if I have anything to do with it. John, would you care to speak to Tom DeYoung's concerns?
Yeah. Last year, there was a $572,000 snow and ice deficit, and this year's tax rate went up 1.8%. No one will talk about the good things that happened, but they'll certainly talk about the bad things. And I don't consider what happened with this issue to be a bad one, because there were two issues. One is that we've had snow plows on the budget, or on capital plans, for sidewalks for the last 10 years. Last year was the worst snow event that we've had in a number of years. Within that $567,000 deficit, we were forced to purchase a sidewalk plow, because both of them broke down. The reasons why the sidewalks were not plowed, nor could the kids go to school in a timely enough manner, or with sidewalks that were plowed, was because we had no sidewalk plows. They had broken down, they couldn't be repaired, and we purchased our first one during that deficit, during that $576,000 deficit. So, and I don't know if anyone is aware of that, but if we didn't purchase it, we wouldn't have had our sidewalks cleared. Kids would have, obviously, and then we were so far behind, because we had so many snow events that occurred at the same time, that it was virtually impossible for us to catch up once we fell behind. This year, I sat down, we went, first of all, we went through the capital budget this year, this year, last year, with the finance committee. The finance, and we talked very explicitly, we watched those meetings, talked very explicitly about the potential for the need to purchase a second one, because we're in a situation where we can't plow snow. Board took a vote not to expend overtime money for sidewalk clearance, which means that we have an eight-hour period of time in which to clear sidewalks. With one working apparatus, that was not, that is certainly not possible to clean the sidewalks in an eight-hour period or in a timely enough manner to allow school, if there's this heavy snow event. In talking with the finance committee, we anticipated that we would have the need to purchase a second sidewalk apparatus. They were fully aware of it and knew that this was a potential. We've decided to make that decision now, in the hopes that we don't have a large enough snow event, so that the deficit would not be so significant. Last year, we had no choice. We had to purchase it. I have gone through the process, this is the first year in three years that I, and I've only been here too, so, in three years that we had a capital plan, where we had enough money, based on a formula, that we are now using to put money into stabilization and put money into a capital plan. I am not, nor would I want anyone to walk away with Mr. DeYoung's comments, that I subverted the process in any way, shape, or form. That is not my intent. This administration is more transparent than any other administration in recent history. If you're looking for why that happened, we decided to make the decision, it was an intended decision, that we were going to purchase this piece of equipment. It is not going to be implied or otherwise, as a standard practice going forward, that I am going to subvert in any way, shape, or form, any process, whether it be capital planning, the budget process, or, for that matter, town meeting. When you go to town meeting, you get more information now than you ever have received about the budget, how that budget was spent, the manner in which we're going to spend it, as well as the capital items. If you look at the reports of the FinCom budget meetings, and you look at our discussions about the need for a second plow, and my comments were, we can't fund everything that the highway department needs. We had prioritized what were important. We had drainage issues, where we needed to look at replacing the current drainage system at the highway garage, because it's so close to that body of water, and we were contaminating the soil. That was a priority, far more so than purchasing a sidewalk plow. And so we did a number of capital items for many of the departments, and one of the things that we had discussed with the finance committee was the need to purchase this. And we couldn't purchase it at that time, but we're going to reconsider that purchase and use money, as we did last year, from snow and ice for that purpose, which is a legal allowable expense. It is not our practice, it's not my practice to do that. I don't certainly want to be portrayed as the villain here, because I know that there is a service that needs to be provided, and that is, we need to clear sidewalks, so that kids could go to school. I do not want a repeat of what happened last year, when we couldn't plow the sidewalks efficiently, because we didn't have a sufficient amount of apparatus to do so. We purchased that plow. We're not going to purchase other equipment, unless it's considered an emergency and part of our plan, as far as snow removal is concerned. We replace blades and other equipment on a regular, consistent basis, in order to prepare for the winter. I think we spent $18,000 repairing equipment that was beat up last year. We filled the salt shed. So there were a number of expenses. And in the FY12-13 budget, we have recommended an additional 25, going from $100,000 to $120,000, to build up to where I think we need to be on a 10-year average for snow expenditure, which is $235,000. So that, you know, one year we may spend it, the next year we may not. But it is certainly a wild card.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of points. First of all, as I led off my discussion, I'm in no position to determine whether it was a purchase warranted or not. Again, my position is, you know, town meeting a month before had an opportunity to purchase this. I didn't hear, I attended that meeting, I didn't hear that if we had the ability, that we're going to purchase a sidewalk snowplow under the snow and ice deficit.
No, excuse me, it was, that discussion occurred at the finance committee level.
It didn't happen on town meeting, though, John. But anyway...
There wasn't an article on for a snowplow on town meeting?
It wasn't on the capital plan?
It wasn't on, it wasn't an article at town meeting, as you portrayed it, at that time. There was no article at town meeting.
There wasn't a capital planning article?
There was a capital planning article.
And this was not even on it?
The sidewalk plow was not on. It was discussed with the finance committee, and we all agreed at that time that we couldn't afford to put it as a capital item. We didn't have enough money, because we had other competing interests at that time. But it was discussed as part of the capital plan, between the department head, the finance committee, the town manager, and what our plan would be going forward. We dropped it from the capital plan. The final capital plan did not have an article on for a sidewalk plow that was, as you said, passed over. There was no article to pass over, as far as the capital plan was. The plan that went forward was the plan that was funded and approved by the finance committee and the town manager for the fall town meeting.
Do we agree it's a capital purchase?
Oh, no question it is. Even the one that we purchased the year before.
Okay. And does it, I just thought, as a town resident, any capital purchase should go through that process.
It did go through the process.
And yet we dropped it, because I guess we didn't think it was high enough a priority yet. A month later, we buy it on a deficit account. The point I would make is, from the public opinion viewpoint, we haven't had one drop of snow, and you're asking the board of selectmen on, I think it was December 12th, to basically go into a deficit spending situation. And I think a lot of people question that. Why are we doing it? And I do, too, because it just seems that any capital purchase should go through the process that we've put in place.
I don't disagree with you. I think it's a matter of semantics in one sense, and that is, that if we didn't vote to deficit spend that account, and we're at, let's say, $65,000, and we spend 50 in a huge snowstorm, we're going to have to vote to deficit spend after the fact. And we're not allowed to, under statute, we're not allowed to do that. So we have to anticipate these expenditures, in some degree, and vote for the deficit spending, whether we actually incur it or not. We had salted, so we spent another $8,000, $9,000 on salt this past week, just in, you know, and that was an activity that would have put that number over. Now granted, you're absolutely correct. We spent the $65,000. If we get a major snowstorm, and we have one piece of sidewalk apparatus that is not going to clear the roads and sidewalks in a timely manner, as far as the school is concerned, for school the next day, or for the snow event itself, somebody's going to say, well, why didn't you anticipate the need for a second snowplow and purchase it somewhere? And even if it's on an emergency basis, it's not something I want to do going forward, and I think I said that three times tonight. This is not part of a standard practice going forward. We did it when we had the big snow event last year. We haven't had any snow this year, and we may deficit spend in snow and ice, and we may not. We may come in close. I anticipate that we're probably, even though we have $100,000, it's nowhere near the $235,000 that we need on an average basis.
I couldn't agree with you more, John. I understand that.
So...
The other question I would have, though, for you, was, was there any effort to contact some of the local small businesses, landscapers, to see if they could pick up that need, as opposed to going out and making a capital purchase?
I don't think, I mean, I wouldn't be able to answer that question. I think Kenan would be able to answer that question more directly, and I can get a response for you as to whether or not we did that. I know that there are not a lot of landscape companies that have the type of heavy-duty equipment we need to remove snow at that rate. And I think if I remember in my discussions with Kenan last year, when the plows broke down, I think that's the first place he turned to, and that's why we ended up purchasing the first piece of equipment, because there was no one in the landscape business that had that type of heavy equipment to accommodate us.
I remember last went to seeing privately, you know, private companies with Bobcats, clearing sidewalks and clearing catch bases.
I don't know who Kenan contacted.
We understand your concern, Tom.
Yeah, and I think, well, I know Kenny shares it, I share it.
Yeah. And the other thing I would say is, is I think, you know, I know this sounds negative, and I know it sounds that, you know, I might be saying things out of school here, that I don't really have the knowledge or the, I guess, knowledge to do. But I will say, and I think as each of the board members know, as Mr. DiAgostino stated, this year, the tax bills are up 1.8. I thought it was 1.9%. The tax rate is the lowest increase since 2006, and home prices, at least according to the assessors, have stabilized and have gone up slightly. To me, that's good news, that, as I wrote to each of you, and I think Andy was the only one that got back to me, that I think should be, you know, expressed to the town, because I do think it reflects some strong fiscal management, you know, on the part. But in this case, I felt that this board's response was a little muted that night, that I would have hoped that there would have been a little bit more debate. And just as a citizen, you know, it just, I just believe in that process, capital planning, and also, if we cannot put things on the tax rate, you know, without people's ability to review and vote on, I'd just as soon do that. But I know this is a bit of a different animal, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Tom, you didn't leave your phone number.
What's that?
You didn't leave your phone number when you called. All right. Anything else? Anyone else, public comment? All right, well, if that's everything, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session, I'm sorry, enter into executive session for strategies pertaining to pending litigation regarding Tedeschi Food Shops Inc. underground storage tank license.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Mike?
I will not be attending that.
Oh, that's right, you'd be...
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Not to reconvene.
Not to reconvene.